Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the combined meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. This meeting is taking place on October 10, 2022, and is a regularly scheduled meeting. I now call to order the portion of the meeting dedicated to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment. Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here together in this community meeting to discuss matters that are important to both the citizens and to the county. We're grateful for the opportunity to have our voices heard, to have their issues considered, and pray that we might be courteous, kind, and receptive to the ideas and the issues and concerns of the citizens, that we might with judicious intent be able to know what is the right thing to do to help further the success of our county through these planning board discussions. We give thanks for all that we have and pray for thy help this day in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let the record show that there is a quorum present to conduct the county business this evening. The next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of the August 8, 2022, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the August 8, 2022, meeting minutes. I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the August 8, 2022 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for September 12, 2022.
Mr. Chair, must approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 12, 2022, planning board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, I have the signature.
The first case on the agenda is an appeal before the Board of Adjustment. This hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. That means that it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standard and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. We're going to call at this time upon the Community Development Director or staff to present our first case.
Good evening, good evening. It's really nice to be back in front of you guys. I'm sorry I've had to miss the last couple of meetings. Everybody's looking hale and hearty, so we're good. Our first case this evening is an appeal, case number 2022-18. Technically, an appeal of a determination of the zoning administrator. It was filed regarding a property located at 741 Hudson Road in Summerfield by the tax pin indicated New Bethel Township. Pardon me. This podium needs to be wider. I've said that for years. Just a quick orientation here. This is the vicinity map where the property is located in the Summerfield area. Yes?
Have you been on city slides?
You don't? I'm sorry, guys. Hang on.
And did you put those in? Because I didn't put those in the presentation.
Let me see. Now it's just those two maps. Let me just... Hang on. Did I click? No. Oh, I apologize. Now you can see it.
There you go.
There we go. And that was the slide I just added. This is just a vicinity map and a location map showing where the property is located here. I'm not going to read verbatim all the legalese, of course, in the staff report, but simply review that what is included are the enabling statutes that establish boards of adjustment and their powers according to NCGS 160D, the administrative and legal provisions that are outlined in the Rockingham County Unified Development Ordinance, procedures for appeals, the definition of administrative decisions and determinations, and lastly, the governing statute that is both in our ordinance and in NCGS 160D regarding the appeals timeframe. The history of this case is included a bit here in the summary. You've got exhibits from the appellant, and you also have exhibits from staff. In short, at this property, there has been a commercial operation in place since before the... an ordinance even existed in Rockingham County, in combination with residential structures. When the UDO was passed in '88, '89, the owner at the time did come in to get a special use permit, which is included in the record. Some of the paper records from that period are limited. That's why you see what you see in the package as opposed to a much fuller set of information like we would have today. We got every piece of information we possibly could. In short, in May 20... around May 2020, a complaint was filed regarding the property at 741 Hudson by Mr. Hyatt. And as part of that, Director then, Kerry Spencer, reviewed the case and made the determination that the activities occurring among the commercial operations that were preexisting adhered to the special use permit at the time and that the trade that was being carried out there was justified according to the NAICS, which is the North American Industries Standards... Institute of Standards, I think, if I remember the abbreviation correctly. We received a second complaint inquiry earlier this year. I think it initially started in January about the property and concerns that the neighbor had then. Staff had several meetings with the neighbor and with the owner of the property. Mr. Marziano prepared a very succinct summary of the... well, detailed but succinct summary of all the things that were reviewed and prepared that, emailed it out, mailed it out by paper, and made sort of a reiteration of interpretation of Kerry's decision from 2020. So basically, the facts of the case are that appeals... I will read this. Appeals of administrative permits or determinations must be received within 30 days of the decision of the Community Development Director according to the County Unified Development Ordinance. The Community Development Director and designees are ministerial agents of the county. We engage in administrative procedures and determinations on a daily basis. It's sort of inherent in what we do. As noted in the appeal filing, the specific issue being appealed is County Attorney Morris' letter dated June 9. As the county attorney is not a ministerial agent of the county, any decision... any letter correspondence or anything like that cannot be considered administrative. That power or that role is not part of what the county attorney's job encompasses. Therefore, according to the legal framework for filing of appeals, there exists no effective or valid appeal. The appeal was not made in time according to the 30-day statute. Even if you were to consider Mr. Marziano's February letter, an administrative determination, it's reasonable enough to do that. Kerry's was a little more clear in the determination that she made, but that again happened in 2020. And lastly, additionally, because of this, there exists no jurisdictional subject matter for the Board of Adjustment to consider. Lots of information has been included to elucidate the board on the history, but the appeal is essentially void. We are represented this evening by... excuse me. outside counsel, Mr. Nick Herman, who will be able to answer any questions and will be defending the county. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to go ahead and answer those at this point.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cochran? Okay, thank you, Lynn. Is Mr. Hyatt present? Mr. Hyatt, are you going to speak or are you going to speak through counsel?
Through counsel.
Okay. I have some other signatures on this paper which I cannot read. One looks like Wayne. Is that you, sir? Are you also going to have counsel speak?
Good evening, Randy Holcomb. I'm an attorney at Guilford County Bar. I represent the owners of 741 Hudson Road. I don't represent Mr. Dennis, but he may be a witness at some point.
Okay. Thank you, sir. What's his name?
Randy Holcomb.
Randy Holcomb? Oh, that's you, okay. And Darren McDonough? I don't hear an attorney, sir. And are you speaking for the Hyatts?
Hyatt.
Okay. Then we'll hear you first. And for the record, if you'd state your name and business address, please.
Good evening. My name is Darren McDonough. My business address is 100 South Elm Street, Suite 500 in Greensboro, North Carolina. I am here on behalf of David Hyatt, the appellant in this particular matter. This evening, I think, the board for its time, I'll try and be as direct as I can. I know the time's important. There seems to be two issues that I think the board needs to address first, or overall. The first is the one raised by Mr. Cochran, which is, is there a jurisdictional issue as to this appeal? I think there is a mischaracterization of what this appeal actually is. In the materials prepared by the county, provided to us and I'm sure provided to each of you, it states that Mr.... the county attorney, Mr. Morris, was responding to a request for information from me. My letter to Mr. Morris is included in the record on appeal. You will clearly state that it was not a request for information, although numerous times in my letter I did state, "Do you have... does the county have any additional information?" But my letter to Mr. Morris was very clear. It was, "There is no special use permit that is granting the current owner the ability to do the things that he's doing on the property." Now, in order to come to that conclusion, I went through and I pulled all the information that was in the county files. I referenced all those materials in my letters. That information does include some of the same information that Mr. Cochran talked about, the initial determination or a determination that was made back in 2020 and the current determination that was made back in 2022, in February of 2022. However, my letter was not trying to say, "You got it wrong in February." My letter was saying that there is a complete absence of any special use permit that allows this, and I tried to lay that out in a new way and address that to the county attorney, as lawyers do with attorneys. In the letter that I received back from Mr. Morris, again, that's in your materials, Mr. Morris states... if I can find it. Ah, yes. In his letter of June 9, in the second paragraph, he says, "It is my understanding that the County Department of Community Development has extensively reviewed this matter and has made an administrative determination that the existing use of the subject property is in compliance with the May 10, 1988 special use permit." He didn't say that they made this determination in February. He said that they've made that determination. That determination is the one that's being appealed from. That determination was made as set forth in the June 9 letter. Mr. Cochran stated that it's outside of the county attorney's purview to be involved in what is considered ministerial matters. However, it should be noted that in February of this year, when the current director provided an opinion as to the matters that were before him, he stated, "I have consulted with the county attorney just to clarify my investigative... my investigation process and seek his advice on how to proceed with this inquiry." So the county does engage Mr. Morris to provide information, advice, as it relates to inquiries that are made to the director. That's clear from their own position. So what we are appealing is the decision that was made in respect to my letter that I received from the county attorney, who stated that he had spoken and had had communications with the director and that an administrative decision had been made. So therefore, this appeal being filed within 30 days is within the jurisdictional bounds. Now, as to the merits of the issue, what is actually being appealed? This, per the information that's been provided, and as we've laid it out in our petition, there apparently were three special use permits for this property. The first one was in 1988. Supposedly, there were two other ones, one in 1989 and one in 1992. Now, in reviewing everything, and again, I go through this in more detail in my letter, the original permit was for a rural family occupation. It was for contractor sales and storage. That was it. There's no documentation that shows any application, any board minutes, or any special use permit made in either 1989 or 1992. So contrary to what the county has stated, that there was a special use permit in those two years, there's no record of it. That fact is very important because the original special use permit clearly states that there can be no change to the use of this property nor new buildings constructed unless there's a special use permit granted. So de facto, if there's no special use permit, they shouldn't be allowed to operate whatever it is they're supposedly operating. I heard it said once by a judge, "If it's not in the file, it might as well be on the moon because it has no bearing." And I think the same thing applies in this case. Currently, what is being operated on the property is stated to be a cabinet shop with paint spray booths, a dust collection system, an automobile service shop, none of which are included in that original 1988 special use permit. So by acknowledgement, what's being... the businesses that are operating on that business right now were not part of that special use permit. Additionally, in the determination band back in 2020, it states that this was a rural family occupation. Under the current UDO, that type of rural family occupation is not allowed in an agriculturally-zoned area, which is what this property is. So in presenting all that information to the county, they still came back with, "We've made a determination, an administrative decision, that the property is in compliance despite the fact that there is no special use permit that allows for any of those uses that I've set forth." I did note in the letter to the county attorney, and it is part of the record, the last document as far as anything relating to the use of the property is an affidavit from December 17 of 1992. That affidavit was provided by Albert Wayne Dennis. He was the property owner at the time. The affidavit requests to build a three-story building. Again, that would be consistent with the original special use permit that says you can't build anything new without a new special use permit. It goes on to state that, why was he building the building? He said it was going to be a one-story frame building at 741 Hudson Road to be used by Dennis Wayne Heating and Air Offices and Sheet Metal Shop. Again, that's consistent with the special use permit. It notes that there'll be a 40-by-60 building on the property used for storage of lumber and equipment for Dennis Wayne Heating and AC Company. Again, that would be in conformity with the original special use permit. Mr. Dennis goes on to state that the three new-story addition will be used for personal woodworking shop in the basement, that Height Service Company would occupy the first floor, and the top floor would be unfinished and unoccupied. I put that in for a number of reasons. First, the affidavit does not state that any portion of the property would be used as a cabinet shop, which is what it's being used for right now. Mr. Dennis's affidavit states that the basement of the new addition would be used for his personal woodworking shop. This was not a commercial endeavor, and the permit therefore would not be required for these situations. Second, the affidavit makes no mention of a spray booth or an automobile service shop, which, again, which is what it's being used for now. Clearly, if these services were in place in 1992, I think Mr. Dennis would have stated so in the affidavit. Third, if the property was not being used as a commercial cabinet shop, spray booth, or an automobile service shop in 1992, those uses must have been added after 1992. But if that was the case, then where is some special use permit after 1992 that would account for that? So in looking at the record, it seems apparent that there has been a failure to follow the requirements of the ordinance. The administrative decision that we're appealing from is the one that was made pursuant to Mr. Morris's letter after I've laid all this stuff out. None of this had been laid out to the county before this. There were different issues with the property, but nothing of this nature. So these particular uses are not authorized, and that's the issue that we brought to the county's attention. They disagreed. They say, "No, things are fine." And so we filed our appeal within 30 days. So that, if it pleases the board, is our position. Again, I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask.
I do have a question. The summary authored by... authored by Mr. Marziano on February 4 covers quite a few things that you brought up. My question is, when were you contacted by the Hyatts for representation?
I was not contacted, I don't think, until sometime in March.
Do you know when in March?
I don't.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McDonough? All right, thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Holcomb, you said you were an attorney. Are you representing Mr. Dennis?
I'm representing the Harrows, the owners of 741 and 743.
Okay. And...
Mr. Dennis is a potential witness if need.
Okay. Then we'll hear from you next, then. And for the record, please state your name and business address.
Good evening. My name is Randall Holcomb. I'm an attorney at Guilford County Bar. My address is 377 South Swing Road. That's Greensboro 27409. And this evening, we're here on an appeal, but I think it's pretty clear, or our position is it's pretty clear, there's no appealable determination that was made within 30 days from when the appeal was filed. There was an administrative decision in 2020 that's already been referenced. There was an opinion authored and made available in February of 2022. There was a May letter from counsel for the appellant to the county in May of 2022, and a short response with no new factual determination, simply stating that a determination's previously been made, that a special use permit exists from the county attorney back to counsel in June. And our position is there... the notice of appeal cites the June letter from the county attorney as an appealable decision throughout, or a determination throughout, and we just don't see where there's any precedent for that being held as an appealable determination. It's a short letter of confirmation that these decisions have been made in the past in response to a letter from counsel. And we just don't think there's standing... there's no jurisdiction to be heard on the heart of the matter tonight. We don't think there's any other issue other than whether this... if there's an appealable determination that we're here to argue on appeal tonight. I don't really have anything else to offer at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Holcomb? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis, did you wish to speak? Since you're not an attorney, sir, I'm going to ask you to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence and testimony you're about to give in this matter before the Board of Adjustment is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Okay. For the record, please state your name and address.
Albert Wayne Dennis, 1229 Brooklyn Avenue, Ramshire, North Carolina.
And what is it that you'd like the Board of Adjustment to know?
I'd like to verify that when I bought the property and built the building in 1983, I had a heating and air conditioning business. At the time... At the time, I put in a spray booth and a dust collection system at that time. The county came out and approved it in 83. So it's been a dust collector, and that's what the argument is about now that that's not acceptable. It was acceptable in 1983, and it was approved in 1983. And do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer your questions.
That appears to be well before the late 80s that Mr. Cochran talked about when the ordinances were developed. Any questions for Mr. Dennis?
I have one.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayward.
Thank you. Mr. Dennis, if you say that this spray booth and dust collector was there in 1983, then why did you come for a special use permit in 1988?
That was when I built a separate building for storage for heating and air conditioning equipment. That was for that. Of course, in 92 is when I got a special permit to build a three-story building, which consisted of a woodworking shop in the basement, a storage for equipment in the second floor, and on the top floor, it was an apartment for housing. And that was permitted and inspected and approved. The top floor for residential was never completed. It was never completed, but that's, that's the, you know...
Where that in this special use permit in 1988, it says that the applicant meets all the requirements for outdoor storage.
For outdoor storage? It was...
And parking.
I don't understand the question. The permit was to build a building, a separate building, for storage for heating and air conditioning equipment. The parking and everything was already established in 1983.
Also, it says in the 1988 special use permit that was granted, that any future modifications of the site would have to be approved only through the action of the planning board. So I know the timeline is...
92, I got a permit to build a three-story building. It was approved, it was inspected, and...
Okay, but do we have a copy of that?
No, the files from back then are actually really sparse. When we went through the minutes, even the minutes from the 90s don't even mention property locations in the minutes. So it was coming through a needle in a haystack, looking through all that stuff. So, you know, it went by people's last names sometimes. Sometimes it didn't even mention people's names. But I believe we found the one talking about a garage on Hudson Road when that one got approved in 89 for the other building, for the automobile shop. But like I said, they didn't have a location, didn't have like a person's last name. So we couldn't even verify that was the specific property location either. We just don't have that information from back then.
So from 1992, you only have an affidavit that's signed by Mr. Dennis?
When we opened that parcel file, there was like, what, 10 pages worth of stuff, max?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dennis?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
So is there any documentation from, is there anything from 89 and 92 in the property record? My question is, how do we know that the special use permit was issued?
Well, like I said, they're not in there, so I don't know. Like I said, finding the minutes, the minutes aren't detailed enough to even give us property location, so I can't verify in the minutes either.
So it seems like we're missing some hard documents here on 89 and 92, other than the affidavit. Is that, would that be correct? Which Mr. Dennis supplied?
Right, like I said, there's no permits in that file. Even the special use permit from 88, what you've got a copy of, the conditions of it, those aren't even represented in the minutes. The minutes just represent that they came before the board that night. So there's no, there's no detail from back in that time period to extrapolate the full stuff from the minutes, and they're not in the parcel file for some reason. I can't say it's this case particularly. There's a lot of cases from when we just established zoning in 88. That's why before 88, there would only have been building permits, and building permits are only required to be kept for six years. So the zoning files back from back then aren't the most complete because it was new to everybody here at the time, is my guess. But I've run into this problem with other files from that same time period.
So just a point of legal clarification for me. We have the affidavit for, that is signed and notarized in 1992. Can we consider that in lieu of any other documents from the county? Can we consider that more official?
I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer on a legal basis. Our attorney will be speaking in a second, after everyone else.
We're going to be calling Mr. Herman, and he can address that. There's a question for Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
Hi. In the web GIS, and this, it may be a question for both. It indicates that the building was built in 1985. You indicated that it was all built in 1983. Any, can you share any insight of why there might be a two-year difference there?
I built the building originally that had the heating and air conditioning business in 85. I think it was when I built the house on the property, a personal house, not the apartment on the three-story, but a personal house.
A personal house, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennis. Have I missed anyone who signed up to speak for this case? In that case, we'll hear from Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm in the capacity of representing the county in this matter, to be clear about this. Look, I know there have been questions about the special use permit, but here's the bottom line of this case. There's nothing in front of you that's been properly appealed. You only have jurisdiction over matters that are properly appealed, such as an administrative determination by your zoning administrator or community development director. And there's no appeal from that here. The appeal that was filed, that you have a few pages in on the record, that Mr. McDonough filed, was an appeal from a letter by Mr. John Morris, the county lawyer. The county lawyer is not the zoning administrator, is not the community development director. And there's no decision or anything that he would say orally or in writing which is appealable to you by any statute or by any ordinance. That's the fundamental problem here. There's a backstory that explains it, which can be sort of confusing, which is that two and a half years ago or more, this matter, everything that Ms. Talbert's been asking about, Ms. Hayward's been asking about, you know, this special use permit, that was decided by the then-community development director in June of 2020. And the bottom-line conclusion of the community development director, two years and seven or eight months ago, was that this gentleman's property was being operated consistent with a valid special use permit. That was never appealed to you. That could have been appealed. And then, and then, somewhat six, seven months ago, last February of this year, once again, Mr. Hyatt comes to the community development director and staff complaining about the same thing, and has issued another determination dated February 4 of 2020. Never appealed to you about this special use permit. You have to do that within 30 days from something that the community development director puts in writing, not what the lawyer does, who has no authority to make any determination that's appealable to you at all. But the backstory goes on. I mean, recognizing that this matter hadn't been appealed to you more than two and a half years ago, and then seven months or eight months ago at the latest, we talked about this past February, nothing having been appealed, then in March of this year, Mr. McDonough, on behalf of his client, writes a letter. That's that March 17 letter that he writes to your current community development director. And in it, says that he represents Mr. Hyatt, mentions explicitly in the first paragraph that on February 4 of 2022, seven or eight months ago, there was this determination by the community development director, the current one, mentions two more paragraphs down that in June of 2020, that's two and a half more years ago, that a determination was made about this matter. And then goes on for two pages to say all of that was wrong. And then concludes the letter to him by saying that this is being used, this Hyatt property, for an unpermitted, non-conforming use. And then says, "And if you have any documents that exist, forward them to me that would show a permit, the minutes of the meeting where additional uses have been approved," asking for information from them, not an appeal or anything, ask for information. And then says, "But if you don't provide that to us," it says, "Absent producing this stuff, we'd like to know what action you guys are going to take to enforce your ordinance." That's the letter this gentleman wrote on behalf of his client. Now, as you can imagine, what happens is when they receive a letter from a lawyer, it only makes sense that county employees refer the letter to the county's lawyer. And it was referred to Mr. Morris, and he responds to that March letter and to those requests on June 9. And he says, having checked with the staff, in his first paragraph, he says, "Well, this is previous, there's a valid special use permit out here." That's true. And the next thing he says is that his understanding is, and he says that extensively, this has been reviewed by the Department of Community Development, which made an administrative determination that the existing use was in full compliance with the SUP. That's true. That's what was reported to him. It's not like a new determination. That's what happened in February, that's what happened two and a half years ago. And then in response to the additional information, he says in the last paragraph that additionally, your request of the department disclose all information regarding this matter, I've been advised that everything has been disclosed. So as a colleague from one lawyer to another, he writes back and answers the questions of March 17, but he's not making an administrative determination, and everything he's saying is true. And then Mr. McDonough, he appeals that letter. That's not an administrative determination. You can't appeal it, there's no jurisdiction here. That's the problem. Okay. And so I just want to be clear with you that from my standpoint, on behalf of the county, that the appropriate motion for this board to adopt is that there is a motion to dismiss this purported appeal because this board has no subject matter jurisdiction over that appeal, because it is not an appeal from an administrative, any administrative determination from anybody sitting over there. It is an appeal from an informational letter provided by the county lawyer, which is not appealable. So there's no jurisdiction for this court, quasi-court, to hear anything about this. Mr. Chairman?
Or Mr. Herman? Chair recognizes Cindy Hayward.
Hi. I have several questions, please. Ordinances are usually violations on, ordinances are complaint-driven, is that correct?
They are, usually.
So if someone came 10 years after a special use permit was issued with a complaint, not an appeal, would that be valid?
Well, they could always make a complaint, you know what I mean? That property is being used improperly.
Okay.
Right, you could always make that kind of complaint. And based on the complaint, what will typically happen is the staff will review it and make a written administrative determination about that. And then, if the landowner is not satisfied, they would have to appeal that to you folks within 30 days. That's the process.
Okay.
But you can't have multiple bites at the apple, having done it two and a half years ago, then seven months ago, and then do it again, this time appealing a letter from a lawyer.
Okay, my next question is, how can all these determinations by staff or county administrative people be made when a lot of the pertinent information isn't even in the file?
Well, they were before. They were, I mean, Mr. McDonough's own letter says that there's a report, an action report and determination dated February 4, 2020, 2022, and one that was referenced dated June 12, 2020. Even the complaining party here doesn't dispute that there were administrative determinations. No one disputes that, or that they weren't appealed.
But to enforce an ordinance, there has to be a complaint. And you said the process is, then there's a written answer. Well, does it stop then, even if the party that feels like they're being violated has these issues, does it just end at that point?
Well, it ends if it's the same thing. I mean, you know, I want to be fair about that, Ms. Hayward. I mean, obviously, if someone now says, "Hey, look, you're putting in a, you know, some kind of industrial business," you know what I mean? That's not, within this use of the special use permit, it's not zoned for that purpose. You put in some now new industrial use, that would be in the nature of a new complaint. But the entire complaint here, that at least was made by Mr. McDonough on behalf, was to say that the earlier administrative determinations were all wrong. That's what the letter's all about, that this Ms. Stacy, what was her, the former community development director, got it all wrong two and a half years ago.
Actually, if you look at the special use permit that we have a copy of in 1988, and this was for storage, then if there's anything other than that being done, it is wrong.
Well, if you properly, if there's a proper, if there's administrative determination that then is appealed, but that doesn't exist here, the administrative determination that was claimed to be appealed was his letter. You can't appeal his letter. In other words, I don't know whether this applicant can file some, I don't want to hypothesize, can file some new kind of complaint, get a new written administrative determination, and then come and appeal. I mean, that would be up to them whether that could be done.
If previous administrative decisions are made on incomplete information, how can they be valid?
Well, they can't be valid, but you have to have jurisdiction to hear them, and you have none. You don't have any jurisdiction unless there's an appeal from an administrative determination. And there has not been an appeal from administrative determination because none was made. There was a letter from Mr. Morris.
I understand that, but I'm saying previously, and I'm certainly no legalist, but this doesn't make common sense to me that decisions can be made with incomplete information to the detriment of someone, of a property owner that feels like things were added. I don't understand why you would have a paint tank and a dust for heating and air conditioning back in 1983.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
I understand. I understand that you're concerned about the merits of this case. What I'm saying to you, though, is that a complainant has to properly appeal the matter to you.
But complaints can come at any time.
But not the same ones over and over, and this is the third time. That's the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Got any other questions for Mr. Herman?
I have a couple of questions.
Chair recognizes Julie Talber.
Without speaking about the merits, but I kind of need to get this out. So anyway, I may go down a rabbit hole. I apologize. What is the process to appeal? Is there a form?
Yeah, there is.
There's a specific form that has to be filled out, I'm assuming notarized, all that other good stuff. And do we have that here?
Yeah, you do have the form. And it is sort of in the last pages of your packet. Actually, it was dated on July 6 of 2022.
Got it, I see.
So you see that one?
Yeah. But, and the ones, is there both of them here?
Well, there's another one because Mr. McDonough filed himself, which is in what he called an appeal of administrative decision on behalf of his client. It's dated June 6. I didn't, I don't think he...
July 6.
Yeah, he meant July 6.
But so we don't have one for 2020 that Carrie addressed, correct?
Correct. Was never appealed.
Okay. So we've got one of them that was never appealed. Okay. So the other...
Two of them.
Okay. So my next question is, I'll go back to my question from before. How do we know a special use permit was issued in 1989 and 1992? If, in the absence of any documents other than the affidavit from Mr. Dennis?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. But just, Ms. Talber, just to be clear about it, what I'm, I know it's important to you to ask that question and to know that information, but what I'm suggesting to this board is it... There's no appeal before this board where the board can sensibly ask that question. It's to go back in the past because there's nothing been appealed to you that allows you to ask the question. But I do want you to understand, it's a legitimate question to ask if one had a valid appeal.
And that's why I asked the first one first because I'm toying, or I'm sort of...
If you had a valid appeal, you'd probably want to know everything about the special use permit. You know, the presentation presumably from the staff would be everything about why they wrote what they wrote. You know, that's the way it usually goes, works, right?
So in a hypothetical world, if, depending on what we do, this may be a never-ending process. Can I assume that or conclude that?
No. It's never, in fact, it is an ending process because if you don't have jurisdiction, you don't have jurisdiction. If, you can decide that either way. One, you just say you have jurisdiction and then decide it, or you say you don't have jurisdiction. But either way, then if it goes to the Superior Court judge, that's the first thing the judge asks. Do you have jurisdiction? And if you don't have jurisdiction, it's dismissed. And if someone brings it again, if it's basically the same thing, you know, both you as quasi-judges as well as a Superior Court judge are going to say, look, I've already decided this matter. Well, I didn't have any jurisdiction to hear it, and I'm not going to hear it again and say the same thing over again. Yeah, okay. All right. But please understand, I do understand your factual question. It's just not an appeal for, maybe it should have been brought forward two and a half years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Well, okay.
Well, it's about a special use permit in 1983 about the dust collection system and a spray booth. The spray booth and the dust collection went in in 1983. The use of the spray booth and the dust collection was because I was in the heating and air conditioning business. I had to spray glue to adhere insulation on the ductwork. So that was in place in 1983. Didn't have to have a special use permit in 88 because it was already in place in 1983. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, what this, I think, comes down to is what Mr. Herman just alluded to as far as our jurisdiction. And to my... It's obvious to me that he's correct. We don't have jurisdiction. And there's no choice for us but to dismiss this. Yes, we do.
Motion to dismiss.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to dismiss based on the fact that we don't have jurisdiction. All those in favor, please signify by raising a right hand. All those opposed, like sign. By a vote of five to one, the case is dismissed. Now, unless there are any objections, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting so we can convene the Planning Board meeting. Board of Adjustment meeting has been adjourned, and we now convene the Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. See the thing here?
That's what I was having such a hard time with.
Yeah. We can't create jurisdiction.
That's why I asked the process.
Okay, where's my agenda? The following applies to rezoning cases. Zoning map changes reviewed by the Planning Board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning Board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the Planning Board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members such as North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will hold a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the Planning Board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the Planning Board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. I noticed some of you folks came in late, and we do have a sign-up sheet if you'd like to speak for any of the rezoning cases. And maybe you didn't get that opportunity because these were picked up at the start of the meeting. Do you wish to speak, sir? Okay. And Lynn, here's the two that no one signed up for. I don't know which case he would like to speak to, but... Now I got to dig through this and find my paperwork.
I got to go back.
There's a lot of people that signed for this thing, isn't there? Here it is. Minutes, minutes. Thank you. Oh, that's for the next case. Okay. At this time, we call upon staff to introduce case 2022-21, a request for rezoning from residential protected to highway commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
We will proceed here. 2022-21 is a request for rezoning from residential protected to highway commercial. It's a group of four small parcels clustered together at the corner junction of NC 87 and Holiday Loop, which is also very close to Cook Florist Road, sort of to the side that I'll show you in the maps here. This is a straight rezoning request, nonconditional. This is located just outside of Reidsville's extraterritorial jurisdiction. These are the four parcels in question. They are here at this junction. Freeway Drive also being quite nearby. Two of these parcels, the two that are westernmost and sort of central and north, already have operating commercial uses that are legal, nonconforming. They've been there for, again, since before we even had an ordinance in place. And they've continued in operation since then, so therefore they are able to continue operating as they do. This is just an environmental map that shows it's in the Jordan Lake... Part of this is in the Jordan Lake Protected Watershed, but no other significant environmental features. And this is our future land use map. This is in the G1 land class. There, I've got my purple dot big. You know I'm obsessed about that purple dot. I got it big this time finally to show you that we're at the junction. If you recall, directly to the south of the purple dot is the parcel that was very recently rezoned from residential protected to neighborhood commercial for Dollar General.
Yes. The ever-present Dollar General.
Being located in the G1 land class, this class is generally characterized by low-density residential development, generally rural, but are located near strategic intersections where neighborhood commercial could be appropriate. We've seen this before. Highway commercial uses are not specifically discouraged in the G1 land class, nor are they explicitly supported. The long history of legal nonconforming uses of a highway commercial nature on the two of these four parcels that I mentioned supports the reasonableness for this rezoning to highway commercial. We got this request... Why am I missing our date? I'm sorry. But from Mr. Rick Morris, who is the applicant. We've got all of the signatures. Oh, 9822, pardon me. The owners, as you can see in your packet, have all signed off on this.
If I can interrupt you for one sentence.
Sure.
What are the legal nonconforming commercial uses there now?
They're all automobile-related. Sales.
There's an automotive shop there. And then there's like another building that's kind of like a... It looked like it used to be a florist shop. It's like kind of knickknacky and such. But there's a longstanding for retail and automobile repair at that location.
Okay. I think I know exactly what you're talking about.
Is that a technical term?
It's very technical.
Chachkes, uh-huh.
Knickknacks. Those are the maps. I did provide you with a corrected reasonableness and consistency statement. The reason I did was because, well, okay, I'm going to back up. The long history of these parcels contributes to support for the reasonableness to rezoning of highway commercial. The zoning matrix in the larger area does also, you have a large mix of commercial uses, industrial uses, mixed in with residential. These four parcels are also directly related, directly adjacent to a North Carolina highway, highway commercial. So although there is not a strict amount of support for it in the G1 transact, there are many, many other pieces of evidence and uses in the area that support this request. That's why I amended the statement a bit. My original statement said "is supported by", but I amended it to "is not strictly..." Sorry, is not supported specifically by the G1 land class. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And again, this is a straight rezoning.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Chair recognizes Jim Fink. I don't recall maybe getting a couple of inquiries.
We've got two phone calls, and they were just basic inquiries. They gave no definition of whether they supported or were against it. Just wanted to know what was going on.
That's, yeah, that was my understanding. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
This car should...
Do we have anybody that wants to speak on this?
No, no one's signed up for this.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Well, it's a straight rezoning, so we're either going to approve or deny it. And based on the fact that there's, two of the businesses are already there, I don't see any reason to deny this request. Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, the board has reviewed case 2022-21, rezoning to highway commercial HC, and is required by NC GS 160D, makes the following findings. The proposed action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment is supported by the intent and description of the G1 land class. The permitted uses in the highway commercial district are compatible with the character of the existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and policies of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, G1 land class, and future land use map. The proposed action is found to be reasonable because the sizes and subject of the parcels are appropriate for the highway commercial HC district. As they exceed the minimum lot size necessary in the district on our typical of parcels in the area, the proposed uses allowed the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effects upon landowners, neighbors, and community. Among these subjects, parcels too are in the legal nonconforming commercial operations at highway commercial scale and have been for some time. These parcels are located adjacent to the targeted crossroads commercial node and at the junction of a major thoroughfare and state highway in the G1 land class. Development criteria for these nonresidential uses will mitigate the impacts to abutting parcels. The subject property abuts others that are currently zoned residential protected RP. Thereby, the parcels are zoned for mixed commercial and industrial, institutional, residential, agricultural, residential use. The highway HC district is suited to the zoning characteristics. I make the motion to approve this rezoning request to rezon the specific parcels on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness. Statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, as may be amended or incorporated into the motion, to be included in the minutes.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve case 2022-21. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so the Planning Board will make a recommendation to the county commissioners that they give their approval to this rezoning request. The next case on the agenda is case number 2022-22, a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural.
I agree, that's fun to say. 2022-22. Is that really fast?
Very catchy.
Yeah, catchy.
Nice numbers.
This is again a nonconditional straight rezoning. It's a request to rezone a parcel of land from residential protected to residential agricultural, indicated by the tax pin noted. Address is 8580 Friendship Church Road. It's in the Williams Brooktown chip. This is the vicinity map, the area where it's located. You will recognize this neighborhood in the next slide. We've had a few cases before us, even in the last 18 months, rezoning. We had a special use permit request last summer before the ordinance changed for double wide to be placed here. The environmental map shows nothing of significance. There's some flood areas nearby, but they don't affect this parcel. This parcel is located in the G1 land class, which encourages low-density residential development and commercial development near our targeted nodes. And Victoria put together a really great map. She did the research on this one. The yellow is, of course, the residential protected zoning. The blue parcels are parcels that, over the years, have all received special use permits of one sort or another for either single or double-wide manufactured homes. So there is a definite mix of site-built homes, modulars, manufactured housing in this area. That's why we completely support this request. The folks, just as, you know, a human heart kind of matter, who are asking for this rezoning are currently homeless and living out of a hotel room, as, as we've been told. That's what they've told us. So we, this came in just in time for us to be able to advertise and get, and get notifications out for the Planning Board to hear it. The Board of Commissioners have taken note and have agreed to hear this at their first meeting next month as opposed to waiting until the second meeting, as they often do, because of the nature of the request. Again, just the reasonableness. The G1 land class, we know what it's about. Encourages residential development. The RA zone supports a mix of housing types, and as noted, there is a great diversity of the types of housing in the area. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? No, you're good. Okay, Jarvis, would you like to come up, please? And for the name, for the name, it's been a long night. For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Jarvis D'Angelo, Broadnecks, 912 Norman Street. Our family own homes, right there on Friendship Church Road. The land that is, that's up, you know, for debate this evening. If the family really do, I feel deserve to be able to put that double wide on their property.
Is that what you intend to do, put a double wide on it?
Yes, sir. That family, you know, let's say you was my father. You left that land for me to have somewhere to stay. The people who stay there, well, whose property it is, they really don't have anywhere else to stay. So I have to agree with them. If anybody owned their own property, I feel you have the right to put whatever you like to put on it, long as it doesn't mess up all our well water. I didn't have no, no beef with nobody about it, but I feel they should be able to have somewhere to stay.
Are there any questions for Mr.?
I noticed, yeah, I do.
Chair recognizes Cory Scott.
So I noticed that there's already a double wide trailer on the property. It's already been cleared, and there's a double wide on there. Can you, can you elucidate then?
If I can, real quick. They came in a few years ago to get their environmental health permit and get started on this, and staff didn't afford it to planning, they afforded it to environmental health. So otherwise, this would have gone through the special use permit process two years ago. It's half the reason why we sped up the process since the department failed them in the first place. But that's why it's already out there, is they thought they had the permits to be out there, when they didn't. So that's what's brought this to y'all, this started this whole rigmarole going. So they were under the impression they had permits, so that's why the home's already out there.
Been connected to the ground or anything yet?
Just sitting on the blocks.
Sir, yes, sir.
Well, let's see if we can get you some permits here. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. This looks like a matter of some urgency, since the home is already there, but can't be hooked up until we get the proper permits. Motion, please. Chair recognizes Jim Fink.
Make a motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezon, to specified parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended, incorporated in the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second.
Seconded to approve application for case number 2022-22. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. The decision is unanimous, and we will be recommending to the county commissioners that they go ahead and follow our lead and approve your application. And best of luck to you. Next item on the agenda is new business, and we have a new Board of Adjustment and Planning Board member, Jeff Callum. Jeff, if you'd come up in the front here. Or better still, go to the podium.
And Mr. Roberts is here also.
Oh, oh, he is? Oh, would you come forward, sir? And what, and what is his name?
Jeff Roberts.
Jeff Roberts. Okay. And James, oh, James Callum.
Two Jeps. James Callum.
Okay, after I say the word "I," you're going to say your name, okay? I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Board of Adjustment.
As a member of the Board of Adjustment.
And Planning Board.
And Planning Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you all. You're both official now.
Welcome aboard.
And Jeff, at the next meeting, provided we have enough chairs, we can jam everybody in here, you'll be up here. And as I said to you earlier, just I'll have you sit close to me, so if you have questions, I can get right to you. And Mr. Robertson, Robertson?
Roberts.
Roberts. Mr. Roberts, as an alternate, it's good if you can attend the meetings because you'll learn a lot just by observing.
Yes. I plan to do that.
And you'll never know, we have absences from time to time, people that can't make the meeting, at which time we'll call you up to, to sit. Okay, well, we appreciate it. We've been lacking in some alternates, so we're glad to have you both. Ah, let's see. Oh, okay. We have no old business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.